Welcome to the 1,968th regular meeting of the Livonia City Council. We're going to start tonight's meeting with Councilman Brandon McCullough, leading us in the Pledge of Allegiance. Please stand.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Mr. McCullough. This is tonight's regular meeting. This will be a voting meeting, and the meeting minutes of this meeting will be approved at the next regular meeting on Monday, May 22. Ms. Nash, will you please take the role?
Councilmember McCullough?
Here.
Councilmember McIntyre?
Here.
Vice President Toy?
Here.
Councilmember Barr?
Here.
Councilmember Donavick?
Here.
Councilmember Morgan?
Here.
President Jolly?
Present. We have all seven members present tonight. At this time, I'll take a motion for the meeting minutes of April 24 of 2023. Motion to approve by Toy, support from Mr. Donavick, I believe. Are there any additions or comments from the council?
Mr. Chair?
Mr. Barr?
Only that I'll be voting present since I was absent for the last meeting.
Sounds good. Any additions or comments on the minutes from the audience? I see none. Ms. Nash, please take the vote on the minutes.
Councilmember McCullough?
Aye.
Councilmember McIntyre?
Aye.
Vice President Toy?
Aye.
Councilmember Barr?
Present.
Councilmember Donavick?
Aye.
Councilmember Morgan?
Aye.
President Jolly?
Aye. The minutes are approved. At this time, the council has set aside, as part of our rules, 30 minutes for audience members to address the council. Each audience member has up to three minutes to address the council on any items that are not on the agenda tonight. Is there any audience communication at this time? If there is any audience communication, please come up to the podium. And I see in the back, sir, we don't have a...
Handheld mic.
We don't have a handheld mic, as you suggested, at this time.
I'll just talk real loud from back here.
Okay, if you don't mind, this lady is up here. We'll go to her first, and then we'll go to you. Good evening, ma'am. Your name and address, please?
My name is Margaret Durrell, and I live at 31545 Pembroke Street in Livonia. Growing up, I was a resident of the city of Detroit. It was my mother's dream for us to live across the street from a school, and we were lucky enough to live two blocks from Six Mile and three blocks from Grand River, right off of Telegraph, the first block west of Telegraph. Why was that important? Because at that time, in 1953, most families only had one car, and Grand River had a terrific bus line, and so did Six Mile. When I went to middle school, I took the Six Mile bus to Lasher and got a transfer so I could get to the ninth grade. When I went to Wayne State, I used to take a bus down there. I know what it's like to wait on a street for a bus to arrive. I can remember 1965, when we had that first horrendous snowstorm. Detroit Public Schools was not closed, and I stood on the bus stop for over an hour, waiting for the bus to arrive to take me to school. But I say all that to say, I am so proud of the city of Livonia for having the community transit system, because we honor our residents who are either handicapped or seniors or need that service with door-to-door service. I can't imagine some of the seniors that live in my community between Seven and Eight Mile walking to either Seven Mile or Eight Mile to get bus service. So I'm really proud that we have put our emphasis on keeping our transportation within our community. Thank you so much for letting me share.
Good evening, ma'am. Your name and address, please?
Hi, my name's Angela Barliakos. I live at 8856 Cardwell. I'm here to talk about a business that's going to open on the corner of Joy Road and my street, Cardwell. It's called the Live Lounge. It says that it's a...it says it's an event space. We talked about this, I think my neighbor did, two meetings ago. We're concerned with the parking, the hours. None of this is known to us. How this business came to be in this spot, that before was a nine-to-five type operation, and now with it being this type of business, I believe they can be open much later. Unsure of what their licensing is, if they're allowed to sell liquor, if they can have parties under the guise of "bring your own liquor," but really they're selling the liquor in there. All these things, we don't know. And I guess my question is...well, my concern is the parking and the litter and the hours. Those are my main concerns. But how do I find out these answers? And I don't know if you guys can help me. The hours, what do I...and how did that get zoned? Because it was never that way. I've been there 20 years, so I'm very unfamiliar with how zoning works. Everything else, from Inkster to Middle Belt, I know there's two party stores. They both close by 11:00 and usually 10:00 on the weekends on my side of Joy Road. So those are the things that are open latest there. There are no other food service or types of businesses like that, Joy Manor, but that's in Westland, and that's been there forever. What rules do they follow in regards to that? And what would be our recourse, or how would I go about complaining if I find that there's things like parking and litter and loitering that we don't agree with? I mean, I don't want to call the police. I don't know, like, if, how...but I don't even want to get to that. It's all going to be fine and work out for everybody's goodness, I think. So those were my concerns. I just wanted to bring it to you guys, I guess. So I don't know if you can answer those questions on how I find out about these things?
Well, so, we have a practice here. If there's any individual council members who want to address this, when they have their chance to speak, they will. I can tell you that this is only recently on our radar as a council. We have not had any votes about this. And after your neighbor brought it up, Mr. Toramina, who's our business and economic development person, he is now aware of it. So it's on his radar. But in regards to any specifics about this business, we don't know much more than you do.
Yeah, I assume that. How did you find out? How does that...I mean, is there somewhere I look to find out if they applied for things? Or...yeah, I don't...that's my question.
At this time, we don't have any information on that.
Okay, because I would be something I could research on my own and not take up the council's time every week, but I'm going to be here every week.
We just don't have any information. If and when there was something before us, it would have been noticed on the agenda.
Yeah.
Okay?
Okay.
Thank you very much, ma'am. Anybody else to the podium? Good evening. Your name and address, please?
Good evening. Merritt Taylor, 9186 Cardwell Street. I received a notice in my mailbox today about this nightclub that's going to be opening. I had not heard of it. We Googled it, and we found out there was a nightclub by the same name in Dearborn, which was basically closed down because they were considered a public nuisance because of noise, loitering, litter, all the above. Your worst nightmare. Cardwell's a very quiet street, and, as you know, no lights. And so I see this as a cut through with a population that likes loud music with those Wolfers blaring, if you know what I mean. That's the type of music that they cater to at this location in Dearborn. And I'm afraid, since they got shut down there, they're trying to open in Livonia. So.
Thank you, ma'am. Okay, Mr. Smith?
Yes.
Yeah, if you can speak very loudly, and I'm sorry that you have to, but I'll note very quickly here. Mr. Smith addressed the council at our last regular meeting, and due to the slope here in the auditorium...
I'm not going down there again.
He's not going down there again, and I think that's understandable. I'm going to give you your three minutes, but I'll just note that he actually had...we've been dealing with this issue during my entire time on council. And I think he actually came up with the first really good idea in regards to how to solve it, at least on the interim basis, is looking into getting a wireless mic. And I am passing that along so that we can do that for people who aren't able to come down. But with that being said, we'll start your three minutes. Your name and address, sir?
My name is Darrell Smith, and I live at 14006 Brookfield. And I had a stroke in October, so I'm recovering quite well, but I still am stuck in this wheelchair for a while. So anyway, I'm glad to be here. I came to speak about the Noble Library. I was out at the Noble Library on Saturday with a bunch of other people that care about that library. And there's over 700 people on the Save Noble Facebook page, so there's a lot of people in Livonia that care about that library. We planted some flowers and cleaned up. I...I'll tell you, I wasn't much help out there, but I showed up. And there was a lot of other people, important people, people that care about Livonia that showed up as well. And so I want to make sure that you know, that the council knows that this library is not a disposable, just a throwaway kind of a thing there. I think the problem that we've got here is, from the time that the Civic Center Library was built, people had second thoughts that we didn't need three libraries, but they wanted to build a civic center, this whole center of activity. And so they built that Civic Center Library even though it wasn't needed. Now, the question becomes, what does Noble Library have for us? First of all, it's an excellent location for a library, so that the people that live south of Schoolcraft can get to the library. Even children can walk to the library in their neighborhood. So it's an excellent location for a library, particularly since the other library's at Seven Mile, and the other, this one is at Five Mile. So it's also an excellent location for a community center oriented around children. That park area there is excellent. So I'm planning to prepare some alternative uses in addition to continuing a library space there. So I'm speaking on behalf of saving the Noble Library.
Thank you, sir. Thank you very much. Is there any other audience communication to the council at this time? I see none. We'll close audience communication. I will go to my colleagues on the council. Mr. Barr?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Those of you that have been in council with me for a while know that May is a big month in the Barr household for birthdays, so I just want to wish a very happy birthday to my daughter Kelsey, who turned 16 this weekend. By eight o'clock, she was already driving out to have breakfast with some friends, so... And then also, happy birthday this coming weekend to my wife, who I will just say is younger than me. That's probably all she wants me to say, so. And, Mr. Chair, if I can, on a more serious note, through the chair to Mr. Toramina, just in relation to the questions about the Live Lounge, I'm assuming that that piece of property is zoned for the use of...is currently zoned for the use of that place, which is why they can come in. Have you had a...I'm putting you on the spot, so if you don't know, that's fine, but have you had a chance to look at that?
The inspection department right now is reviewing permits for that particular space.
Okay.
It is zoned commercial. It does currently allow for the use as proposed, but there are limitations that they are considering, primarily with respect to parking and other building capacity issues. They, to my knowledge, have not made a final decision on the permit or have issued that. I believe they're seeking changes from the applicant relative to some of these issues, but it is being reviewed by the inspection department. So I would suggest, then, that if any residents want information, they should reach out to probably the director of inspection for that information.
Okay, and that was going to be my next question. I was going to suggest to the resident that she reach out to the planning department, but it sounds like maybe the director, the inspection department is the better option, which you can find that number on our website. And as Mr. Jolly said, I mean, that hasn't come before us yet, so council hasn't had any purview, but again, to the resident, if you want to get information, just call the inspection department. They'll at least point you in the right direction. And, Mr. Chair, I just, with my smart crack earlier, my wife's exactly one week younger than I am, so we always joke about that. It's a reason for my comment, so.
You know, before you went into the serious matter, I was going to say we had planned to wish you a happy belated birthday, May 6th is Scott's birthday.
Yep, thanks.
So, one year and one week older, or a couple days?
Yeah.
Okay, Mr. Donavick?
Thank you, Mr. President. And not to go too much more into detail, because Councilman Barr kind of already covered it, but for the residents that have not been here, we've already spoken to Mr. Toramina. Mr. Toramina, this location specifically and this type of industry, this business, this is similar to what we've talked about with these new event spaces that have come up since COVID, right? This would fall into that, into that category, and how we are looking at updating our current zoning ordinance to kind of tackle this issue where these event spaces that have popped up, they're not your traditional banquet facility. They are a smaller place, smaller gathering place, and they're used for all kinds of different events, whether it be birthday parties, this sort of party, et cetera. And they've...some of them have turned into these sort of, you know, alcoholic party nights and whatnot. And I live down in the South End, so I definitely am sympathetic to that. And Mr. Toramina and the planning department and the building department and council have already been kind of talking about how the new zoning ordinance can take into consideration and make sure we have some regulation on these type of venues so that they don't impact the residents. I don't know if you want to elaborate a little bit more on that, Mr. Toramina, and again, on the zoning portion of that?
Well, the zoning amendments that you'll act on this evening, or that is on the agenda for tonight, they will address the issue of banquet facilities. There'll be a new definition, and this will cover event spaces. It's my belief that an operation similar to this, under the new regulations, would require going through a formal review process. This, bear in mind, however, this space has been...the original applications, I believe, were filed in September, so it's been in the hopper for a while, so to speak.
So, if I understand that correctly, moving forward, this specific location never came to city council because it was essentially permitted?
That's correct.
But with this new zoning, we will essentially treat these event spaces more like a special waiver use? Would they have to come before council for approval? Or not necessarily special waiver?
Depending on the size, the answer is yes. The larger facilities, over 50 people, would.
So what it sounds like to me, if residents, again, the neighbors down there, you know, never came before council because it was permitted previous, but now it looks like our zoning and planning, et cetera, are really looking to this and try to tackle this. So it may not help you right now. Maybe there's something that happens to inspection like Councilman Barr alluded to, but, you know, it is on our radar. We're trying to figure it out for the future. Thank you, Mr. President.
Vice President Toy?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Just a couple of events. Our city's a very active city, as most of you know, and our own Livonia Symphony is sponsoring their annual garden tea, and I know several members on the council always attend that. Unfortunately, I'm busy on that Sunday, the 21st, but it's going to be at Laurel Manor Banquet Center, and they do a super job on that. And if any of you are able to go, please contact them. Also, I was asked by a very worthy cause here in the city, Tailwaggers, that does a charity golf outing this year over at Whispering Millows on May 20th. So the day before that, you can golf, and then you can go listen to music. And that's at Whispering Millows Golf Course. It starts at 7:00 a.m. And I think we all would be remiss if we didn't wish our mayor a happy birthday. I believe she's 60 today. I think she's proud of it, so that's why I threw out the number. After certain ages, you get real proud of whatever age you are. So anyhow, happy birthday, and Scott's family and everyone else that has a birthday today. But just wanted to announce those couple of events. Mr. Chair, thank you very much.
Thank you. Go to Mr. Morgan.
Yes, I appreciate that. Thank you, Mr. Chair. I just wanted to announce that Anastasia and Katie's Coffee Shop will be having their second annual car show on May 20th, that's Saturday, at 11:00 a.m. till 1:00 p.m. And it's an excellent place to visit. I was there Saturday and had a cup of coffee, and it was...it's amazing place. They do amazing things there. I'd really recommend that you stop by Saturday, May 20th, 10:00 a.m. till 1:00 p.m., and just say hello, keep our local businesses going, and thank you. That'll be it, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Mr. Morgan. Mr. McCullough?
Thank you, Council President. This Saturday was an action-packed day in the city. I think my schedule started off around 8:30, visiting Noble Library for a park cleanup, saying hi to everybody there. Then from there, moving on to Clement Circle with Mr. Alexander, who's in the crowd as well, who had a great, good turnout there as well. From there, we had ribbon-cutting playground openings at the Ben Chalani Park right by Bicentennial. Really cool. If you haven't had a chance to get out there, get out there, whether you're an adult or a child or both, there's something for everyone out there, should we say. They've got an adult park, and then there's obviously a kid area. And President Jolly actually was instrumental in making that enhancement happening, and I wanted to give him some big kudos on that, and everybody else that was involved, the Chalani family, Parks and Recs, Ted Davis. Park's great. It's a great amenity for the community. After that, we had Supers Dog Park. We had basically renaming of the dog park, and just fun happenings in the city. After that, I had to go coach the 10 U Livonia Knights, play hockey, and get their butts kicked by Gross Point, but that was fine. All in all, it was a great day in Livonia. So kudos to everybody, you know? It really makes you see how great of a community we really live, we really live in. The other thing I wanted to, and I'm hoping to gain some support from one of my colleagues, I'd like to throw in committee of a whole, the subject matter of restructuring vacant and abandoned structures fee schedule.
Support.
Thank you. So, you know, I know our colleagues, I think we all can agree on this, that, you know, we've got blight around the city, right? You've got some buildings that everybody keeps talking about at different intersections that kind of just sit there and kind of rot away. Right now, we do have a process, the city does, and we collect $42 a month on vacant and abandoned structures. So if you kind of add that up to a year, it's about $500. So I look at that, and I go, I know, you know, I'm not trying to put businesses in the corner, but at the same time, I think we should look deeper into these fees and adjust them. Our duties as council members are, you know, take a look at things and make changes where needed. I did some research, and just to not bore you guys, but the city of Marine City, they charge for first six months $75 monthly. After the second six months, it goes to $150. Then it goes to 200, and then after, I think about a year and a half, it goes up to 250 a month that the city would gain. With the city, we're not able to profit from that, so that's why I want to toss it into committee of a whole to discuss, in the event that we do pass something, that we could utilize those funds for, whether it's beautification, or maybe even helping Mr. Toramina with an extra staff member in economic development. But I think that this would be a good step forward, to have a discussion and see what we could do to push these businesses and land developers to make some progress in the city. So, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Donavick.
Thank you, Mr. President. Thanks to Mr. McCullough for offering that up. I know about a year or two ago, maybe, we had a discussion in one of our committees to talk about, like, blighted and vacant buildings, and this was a topic at that meeting. And I'm happy to see that we're going to have some discussion further on that specific portion of maybe incentivizing the...minimizing vacant buildings in our city. I understand, and I want to be careful about penalizing, because sometimes there are economic issues and strategic issues as to why a building stays vacant for a short period of time. But it'll be some good conversation to that, and I look forward to that. And since we're on that note, we do have a committee meeting next week, and I'm looking forward to Mr. McCullough being there. That will be Wednesday, May 17th. I had offered that up. And that will be in Councilman Scott Morgan's committee, and that's the subject matter of demolition for blighted residential and commercial properties. And we're going to talk about what the city can do, the power it can give to the law department and Mr. Drumhanna's Department in Building and Ordinance, so that we can give them the ordinance power to demolish blighted and vacant buildings. Now, of course, there's a lot of legality that goes into that. The city of Westland, their mayor and council had passed a ordinance giving them that power. And again, you have to give the property, private property owner ample opportunity to remedy the situation, and I think City of Westland did that. And since they passed that ordinance in 2021, they have now demoed two vacant and blighted buildings within the city of Westland. One, more specifically, on the border of Livonia and Westland on Amber Trail, the old naked mill tavern right there, and that was a blighted building for some 25 years. So they are similar, and I think they work hand in hand, but they are different agenda items. So that, if any residents are interested, that will be next Wednesday at 7:00 p.m. here at City Hall, in Mr. Scott Morgan's committee. Thank you, Mr. President.
Mr. Morgan?
Yeah, that's exactly what I was going to touch on, and maybe we could just add that into that, into that committee for that evening. I'm not sure if we can do that or not, but might as well discuss that also, since it is containing blighted buildings, and that's what we're talking about, so.
We currently have a motion on the floor to put that into the committee of the whole. Mr. McCullough, would you like to amend your motion to place that as an additional item in Mr. Morgan's committee?
I appreciate it. With this being specific, this has to do with the fee schedule. I'd like to just keep it where it's at, a committee of a whole. I do appreciate, I think these are somewhat similar, but the specifics of the fee schedule, I'd rather make it a priority in committee of a whole.
Okay. Is there any other council comments in regards to this motion?
No.
I see none. Is there any audience comments in regards to Mr. McCullough's motion to add an item to the committee of the whole regarding the fee schedule of vacant buildings? I see none. Ms. Nash, can you take the vote on that, please?
Councilmember McCullough?
Aye.
Councilmember McIntyre?
Aye.
Vice President Toy?
Aye.
Councilmember Barr?
Aye.
Councilmember Donavick?
Aye.
Councilmember Morgan?
Aye.
President Jolly?
Aye. That matter passes, and we'll go back to council communication here. Ms. McIntyre?
Yes, a number of items. First of all, just a happy birthday, Mayor, and welcome to the club. It's a pretty good club to be in so far, with a month and a half under my belt, but happy birthday. We do have two retirees to announce this evening. The first is Tony Laporte, our library director, who retired after 25 years of outstanding service. And also, a second retiree, David Flahand, a public service worker one from DPW, who gave the city 30 dedicated years of service. And we wish both Tony and David just a fantastic retirement. Thank them for all they did for the city for years of dedicated service and work, and wish them a long and happy and healthy retirement. The third item that I wanted to mention was I wanted to congratulate the Livonia Community Prayer Breakfast Committee on an outstanding event last Thursday morning. Think we had over 350 people there, and it's 49th anniversary of the prayer, of the community prayer breakfast. It is, like many other organizations that use the name Livonia, like Livonia Spree, Livonia Civic Chorus, Livonia Symphony Orchestra, and so on, it is a separate 501(c)(3) organization, meaning it has no affiliation with the city. It receives no city funding. It receives no taxpayer funding. It's a private organization that was put together 49 years ago to provide a morning. It's actually about an hour and a half of Christian fellowship. It is a committee that is, or an event that is absolutely open to everyone. Everyone in the community is invited. And there's...was contacted by some people who didn't understand, because it said Livonia, why it is a Christian-focused breakfast, and explained that it is a Christian-focused breakfast because the committee who put it together 49 years ago put it together for that purpose. And certainly, Livonia is a great community of faith. Every faith is, I think, represented in our population, welcome here. And I speak for myself, but I'm sure I speak for others, we would welcome other organizations to come together to celebrate other faith or ecumenical events. But just congratulations to the committee and to the chair, our Wayne County Commissioner, Terry Morecki, on just a fantastic event and just a great morning. The other thing that I had to mention, and this is a little bit grimly, I had some calls and emails from several citizens who were wondering about the new stadium that's proposed at Madonna University and is on its way to becoming reality. I think they originally were trying to get open by this year, or this summer. That's not going to happen. That entire block of Madonna that goes from Levan to Newburgh and Schoolcraft to Five Mile is owned by...it's zoned RUF, and it's owned by the Felician Sisters of America, which is a subsidiary of Felician Sisters International. The zoning on that property allows Madonna University to build anything that is considered to be part of their academic mission. The word that's used is incidental or ancillary. So when they built dormitories, they didn't have to come to the city for zoning. They didn't have to come to us for site plan approval. The same with the stadium. They did have to get, and this is the truth, they did have to get permission from the Felician Sisters, went to the Vatican and all the way to the Pope. So I...but I did ask Mr. Toramina if the Pope's going to be there for the grand opening, and we don't have a...we don't have any answer on that yet. But that's why it didn't need to come to city council, and people were wondering, how could this stadium be put together and built? And I never, I never heard anything about it from city council. There were two elements, though, of the stadium that did require approval by the zoning board... elements, though, of the stadium that did require approval by the zoning board of appeals. And that was a parking deficiency, and that was the lighting. And both of those items had to go before the zoning board of appeals, and they were approved by the zoning board of appeals. So, we are, the stadium is moving forward, but I just wanted to explain, because I don't think I'm the only one that's had some calls and emails about this, wondering how this could move forward. They do have a partnership with a Gold Star Detroit Football Club, and one of my sports colleagues will have to let me know if it's a professional or semi-professional.
Professional.
Soccer league. But because the stadium is being built for the use of Madonna University, there's nothing in the zoning that restricts them from having a partnership with an organization like Detroit, Gold Star Detroit Football Club. So I just wanted, I know that's a long explanation, but I thought it might be helpful for people to hear why that did not have to come to the council for approval. And then just finally, to add to what my Councilman, Councilmember Toy said about the Livonia Symphony's garden party on the 20th or the 21st, this coming Saturday night is their spring concert, Spring Awakening, and I would urge you to make plans to attend the concert. They're phenomenal concerts, we're very proud. Not many communities of our size have a professional symphony orchestra as we do, and it's going to be a fantastic program. You can visit their website for tickets. And with that, I'm all done. Thank you, President Jolly.
Thank you very much. Thanks for the explanation. Okay, as far as council announcements, I just have two additional birthdays. We have Dave Varga, the Mayor's Chief of Staff, is celebrating a birthday on May 9th, and our Finance Director, Mike Slater, is celebrating a birthday on May 21st. So we want to wish them the best as well as they celebrate their birthdays. And with that, we will finally move to the agenda for this evening. We will start with the consent agenda. These items tonight are numbered 1 through 9. These have been previously studied at the April 24th study meeting and found to require no additional study. They will be voted on as a single vote. Do I have a motion on the consent agenda?
So moved.
Support.
Motion by Donavich, support by McCullough. Is there any audience comment on the consent agenda, items 1 through 9 tonight? I see none. Ms. Nash, please take the vote.
Councilmember McCullough?
Aye.
Councilmember McIntyre?
Aye.
Vice President Toy?
Aye.
Councilmember Barr?
Aye.
Councilmember Donavich?
Aye.
Councilmember Morgan?
Aye.
President Jolly?
Aye. The consent agenda passes, we will move on to unfinished business tonight. That is a report out of the Senior Citizens Families and Environment Committee Meeting of April 19th of 2023. I'm going to hand the floor to Vice President Toy, who chairs that committee, to give that report. Ms. Toy?
Thank you very much, Mr. President. We had four items in that committee, some of them a little older than others, no pun, because it's a senior citizen, never mind. Anyhow, the first subject matter was on local bus transportation for the city of Livonia, and there was a large discussion on that. But Councilmember Rob Donavich offered a motion to remove this item from committee, because we studied it in other areas as well. So that would be the first motion, if he wants to offer that here on the floor. It's up to him.
Mrs. Vice President?
I think I still get to, I get to recognize you, yeah.
Mr. President? Thank you, Mr. President, Ms. Vice President. I'd like to make a motion to remove that item from the agenda, or from the committee, rather.
Do we have a second for Mr. Donavich's motion?
Support.
Support from Morgan. Any comments on removing that? I see none. Any comment from the audience on removing that item? I see none. Ms. Nash, take the vote on that.
Councilmember McCullough?
Aye.
Councilmember McIntyre?
Aye.
Vice President Toy?
Aye.
Councilmember Barr?
Aye.
Councilmember Donavich?
Aye.
Councilmember Morgan?
Aye.
President Jolly?
Aye.
Thank you, members. The committee also recommended a no further action on that item as well, and so therefore, that will be studied in other areas. It was almost a duplication of effort. It was from 1998, which wasn't that long ago, but now, Item 2 was also a discussion, and statements were made indicating there were not enough drivers, they were underpaid, and the subject matter had to do with mass transit. Council President Jolly offered to keep this item in the committee for further discussion, and therefore, the committee recommends that it be left and remain in the committee, if there's no objection. Correct?
Yes.
Okay, so that's going to be left in.
We have a question real quick.
You were addressing the Item B, correct?
Correct.
7415?
Correct.
On mass transit?
Yes.
But you may, you talked about insufficient bus drivers?
If I may?
Go ahead.
So if you'll notice, with the different labeled topics in this committee here, it was found that there was much redundancy?
Oh, yeah.
In the different topics, and the one, the reason for my motion that night, although I can't make it tonight, was to keep the subject matter of mass transit, because it was a more general category.
No, I'm not questioning that, but the discussion about bus drivers, that was in the next, wasn't that?
Right, right. There's more in there as well, right.
If I remember correctly, they kind of all flowed together to some degree.
Yeah. Okay, good point, but we touched upon it, and I think it's, they want, I don't know, it was in the attorney notes, so. So anyhow, that's going to remain in committee unless there's any other discussion, Mr. Chair. No? Okay. So that was Item 2B. Item 3, it was a subject matter of the Livonia Community Transportation Services. That was a more lively discussion, if you will. There were a lot of different statements made and good points that were brought up, that we are losing some employees, and we are down 16 drivers, when normally we're at 25. And, you know, if any of you own a business or work for a business, you know that employees are hard to find right now. The pay is $32,000 a year, it needs to be higher. Our starting pay is $13.36 an hour, while other communities are paying about $18 an hour, was said. These are all statements by various people. Benefits are not offered to drivers. They need to offer more to entice younger drivers, was a suggestion as well, Mr. Chair. There are no available drivers around, it looked like, and again, these are statements, there's not a lot of, you know, whatever, opinions. Scan, which is the Senior Citizen Activities Network Program, was discussed. Drivers serve about 19,000 to 20,000 residents in 2020 to 2021, which was even higher in 2022. So the need has arisen, and I know that Councilwoman McIntyre pointed out about the Senior Alliance, it serves 34 communities, and I know she's on that board and does a great job over there, and they were showing an increase in rides, particularly to doctor appointments and grocery stores.
Rides in Livonia.
In Livonia, pardon me, thank you. There will be school bus drivers retiring by June 23rd, was mentioned, and we sent research to Civil Service Commission for Medical Transportation as well, and the administration was asked to provide information about emergency funds to be used for driver raises until adequate money can be used. The administration was also asked to provide salary compensations, or comparisons, excuse me, of drivers in other cities, and the administration was asked to look into a one-time pickup at Silver Village that we had heard about as well. Council President Jolly asked that a formal request is made to look into raises for our drivers, and Councilmember McIntyre asked the administration to investigate funds for staffing to begin in the fall. The committee has several recommendations, Mr. President. The administration to look into finding funds to provide raises for drivers, the administration to provide salary comparisons of drivers in other cities, the administration to look into a one-time pickup at Silver Village, and lastly, for this item to remain in committee. That is our report, Mr. Chair.
So I'm gonna take those recommendations that you mentioned, as you're proposing that motion, is that correct?
Correct.
Is there a second for that motion?
Second.
I think there was simultaneous there.
I would give it to Councilwoman McIntyre, she's been here longer.
Ms. McIntyre, you have the second there.
Thank you.
Would you like to expand upon anything in regards to that motion?
We, when we opted out, when the committee opted out of SMART, and we opted out of SMART, and instead, we have a transportation village that is dedicated to transportation services in Livonia, to provide door-to-door services for our senior citizens and for those living with physical and cognitive challenges of various sorts. And it's always worked very, very well. We are no longer providing the service that we have committed to provide to our residents, because we can't get enough bus drivers. And this is a supply and demand. We have a lot of conversations in these meetings about pay increases, and they're good discussions, and, you know, if we had our way, just like, you know, everyone in the world, right? Or I shouldn't say everyone, many, many people do not feel, or society does not feel, that they're fairly compensated. But, you know, fair compensation is a difficult subject, or a difficult measure and number to put your finger on. But there are cases, and we give raises sometimes, when maybe the market doesn't indicate that there is a, that there's a supply and demand imbalance. With the bus drivers, there's a very clear supply and demand imbalance. We cannot provide the services that we have told our residents that we would provide, because we don't have enough bus drivers. And we don't have enough bus drivers, because we're not offering competitive pay. So that's the reason that this is, that we have this motion, to formally direct and ask the administration to move quickly on looking into what we can do to increase the compensation. And it's a process, it has to go through civil service, but there were two items I'd just like to delineate, if that's okay with you, Vice President Toy.
Please, please.
One is looking long-term at driver, at driver compensation, but also, if there are any COVID funds remaining that could be used to provide a temporary, quick increase in the driver services. And COVID funds have been allowed for compensation for first responders and other city personnel, and so those are the two items that were both included in that motion. Thank you very much.
Mr. Donavich?
Thank you, Mr. President. The committee meeting we had was really eye-opening to me. I see we have one of our drivers here this evening.
Is this in regards to the motion?
Yes.
Specifically?
Yes, specifically. And it was eye-opening to me, because I believe there was 25 drivers previous to COVID, and now there's only 16 drivers, which is nine drivers short. And the community transit system is a really smart system that the city of Livonia implemented. We were spending, I think it was nearly $16 million we spent on SMART. We never even used SMART. The vast majority of residents didn't use it. So, we now have this community transit program that is working great, but unfortunately, there seems to be some shortfalls there, and I think the administration needs to act immediately, because there is a need for the transit system, and it's, and we were at that meeting, we learned a lot about the community transit system and the dedicated drivers. If I remember correctly, someone talked about the city of Farmington, Farmington Hills, they're paying their drivers $18 or $16 an hour. So, I know it's always difficult for the city financially to give raises, but at the end of the day, employees deserve to be compensated fairly, and if we can pull comparisons from similar communities, and they're making $3, $4, $5 an hour more, right across Eight Mile, why would you stay in Livonia and make less money? And these drivers, they're not just your, they're not a typical driver. They get out of the vehicle, they help people that are disabled, they help seniors get in and out of the trucks, the buses. So, it's a very labor-intensive job as well, and I think it would implore us, if we look at what other communities similar to Livonia are paying their drivers, and I think we'd find out pretty quickly that we're not paying competitive to those communities, and we wonder why we can't attract drivers. And we're also competing with LPS simultaneously, and they need tons of drivers, and they're hurting as well. So, I'm looking forward to the administration acting on this quickly, and thank you to City Council for taking this up and addressing this problem. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you.
Mr. Chair, you could, you could.
Mr. Barr, do you want to address the motion?
I have a question about it, yeah, about the report. Through the Chair, to the Chair of this committee, Ms. Toy, do you know, and forgive me for not knowing, are these full-time jobs or are these part-time jobs, these bus driver jobs?
They work about 30 hours a week.
About 30 hours a week, okay. There's just some numbers here that didn't jive, and I was trying to make sense of it. So, and then also, just to be clear, what we would be voting on here is simply to be asking the administration to put together a recommendation for raising these, right?
Correct.
Okay, thanks.
Yes.
I don't want to cut you off here. I know we have at least one audience member who would like to address the topic of Livonia Community Transit. So I would like to open it up to the floor at this time, to the audience.
Sure.
And then we can.
Absolutely.
I'll go back to you, and then we'll proceed to the vote on this particular item. Good evening. Whoever would like to go first is more than welcome. Good evening, your name and address, please.
Hi, my name is Patty Rigio, 37204, Breton Drive.
Good evening.
Thank you very much for addressing this. This is a really, really important issue, especially, I have a daughter that is visually impaired, as well as cognitively impaired. She used to drive, but because of the visual impairment, she can no longer drive. So this is a really important need. You promised, the city of Livonia promises that they have the service, and right now, you cannot provide it. So thank you for addressing it. My question is, though, I heard that the demand is up even in 2023, from what it was, which you had recorded in 2020, 2021. You had data, I think, for how many people have been using it. You said you previously had 25 drivers, you're down to 16, but with even the increased amount, is 25 drivers even enough? So, I'm going to leave that with you.
I appreciate that, thanks.
Thank you. Good evening, your name and address, please.
Hi, I'm Elaine Phillips. I'm Elaine Phillips. I live at 19691 Farmington Road, and I speak in support of expanding both mass transit in Livonia by raising wages for community transit drivers and by adding bus lines. I believe this may be under Items C through D as well. But I moved to Livonia two years ago to begin a job as an engineer after grad school. I take the Livonia Community Transit Shuttle to and from work, as I am partially blind and cannot drive a car. While I am grateful for the shuttle, it is a Band-Aid for the disabled and seniors, even at 25 employees. With its rigid scheduling and limited staff currently, I'm often unable to get rides at times other than 8:00 AM sharp or 5:00 PM sharp, making it incredibly expensive to get to the doctor, go grocery shopping, or do other common errands around town. So, to live my life here, I have to spend $50 to $100 round trip on ride-share services, including $30 more tonight, just to get home from this meeting, and I pay through the nose in grocery delivery fees so that I can eat. Thankfully, as an engineer, I can afford that for now, but it is stunting my ability to give my money to the city and to local businesses. Additionally, a few bus routes, as well as extra Livonia Community Transit staff, would benefit everyone, not just the disabled and elderly. For example, what if your car breaks down and needs to go into the shop for a few days? You might be able to figure out a carpool with a spouse or coworker, but with public transit, it would be much simpler. In plenty of other cities, you'd be able to hop on a bus, listen to music, and be in the office within an hour or less. There is no strong reason that we can't have that here. More transit is more convenient for everyone in times of need. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Is there anybody else who'd like to address this item from the audience? I see none. Ms. Toy, do you have additional comments in regards to the motion?
Yeah, I just wanted to say that I believe the motions are in order, and this committee, as has been said by my colleagues, was a very important meeting that we had, and this discussion needs to be continued, and I know Councilwoman McIntyre was very instrumental in bringing a lot of the good points forward, and we appreciated that. Thank you.
With that being said, Ms. Nash, can you please take that motion, or take that vote on the motion, rather?
Councilmember McCullough?
Aye.
Councilmember McIntyre?
Aye.
Vice President Toy?
Aye.
Councilmember Barr?
Aye.
Councilmember Donavich?
Aye.
Councilmember Morgan?
Aye.
President Jolly?
Aye. The motion passes, and we will be looking for those formal recommendations to come from the administration. Ms. Toy, does that conclude your report?
No, I have Item 4, Mr. President.
The floor is yours.
Thank you. The subject matter of transportation issues for seniors and families and other community residents. Statements were made indicating there should be a formal process put in place for vehicle maintenance and fueling locations. There was some real question of what was going on there, and we want to do some further investigation, if you will. So, Councilwoman McIntyre had offered that this be left, this item, in committee for further discussion, but I also want to thank the constituent, Mrs. Earl, that came out tonight, shared with us her experience as a young person back in, did you say, the 60s, on transportation. She brings up a point even back then, how important it was for her getting around the city. So, we've grown a lot since the 60s. So, appreciate everyone's, you know, gathered thoughts on this and help on this.
So, appreciate everyone's, you know, gathered thoughts on this and help on this because it's a huge problem, especially when you pay these gas prices. Other than that, thank you very much. Just a delight to chair this committee.
Ms. McIntyre?
Thank you for mentioning that point, Vice President Toy. It was disheartening to hear about the sense that we got and we had, we had the Housing Department, as many people know, transportation now falls under the purview of the Housing Department, but it was disheartening to hear the situation with trying to maintain, that the staff has in trying to maintain these vehicles and get them serviced. It sounds like a hit-or-miss situation and that's with all due respect to our outstanding DPW fleet management team, which Gary Garrison and his team are just absolutely the, the best. It's not because they don't do a good job, it's, I, I don't think we've paid a lot of attention to the maintenance needs of these, of these vehicles and the repair needs and have a good plan in place for ensuring that the fleet is up and running. So, thank you.
Thank you, Ms. McIntyre.
Mr. President.
Mr. Donavich?
Thanks, Mr. President. I just wanted to add on to that, Councilwoman touched on that and Councilwoman Toy touched on that. I imagine there's some sort of formal process and what we found in this committee is there seemed to be some confusion on a process for our drivers, where they, where they fuel up their buses. It came to light that the, the city, the, the city doesn't maintain our own buses, it sounds like. It sounds like we, the, the department has to take those buses to private contractors, private mechanics to fix and, and maintain those buses. And to Councilwoman McIntyre's point, the, the Gary Garrison and DPW and the fleet management that does all the, that does maintenance on our vehicles, they work really hard and I, I checked actually since that committee meeting, trying to understand why we don't do the own maintenance or what it sounds like we don't do the own maintenance on our buses for the most part, is I think they have maybe four mechanics inside this, inside the garage that has to maintain hundreds of city vehicles and specialized equipment and they have to gear up for snow removal and leaf removal and they have all these jobs they have to do as mechanics. And from my, from what I've found, and, and don't quote me, but what it sounds like is there's only four mechanics back there, two or three of which have been there for 25 years or so and they're at higher management level and they're out there turning wrenches. So, again, I, I mean, we keep touching on it, we have to pay our people, otherwise we're not going to attract people to come work for the city of Livonia. And we want to be fiscally responsible, but you expect four drivers or four mechanics to maintain hundreds of vehicles and specialized equipment and then buses? It just, I don't understand how you do it and I don't understand how we're able to spend this money on these really brand-new buses. We just bought a new bus. I think the council just approved a few hundred thousand dollars for a brand-new state-of-the-art bus to, to tackle some of the issues that one of the residents spoke about, because we have this really great program, the community transit system. It's one of the best programs in the state of Michigan because it's door-to-door service. It's not some bus stop that's at some random corner miles away from you that you have to walk miles or blocks to get to, it's a door-to-door service to help our most vulnerable, to help seniors, to help disabled people that need that door-to-door service. And it'd be nice to see this program really get the attention it deserves. And not to say it's not, but clearly there seems to be some issues here and I hope the administration can tackle that because we're spending millions of dollars on, on a system that really could be one of the best in the community or in the state of Michigan and I think we're just falling short on a few things. Thank you, Council President.
With that being said, we're going to move on to unfinished business. Item number 11, block party request from Elizabeth Dryer to be held on Saturday, May 27th from 2:00 till 10:00 PM on Apporto Avenue between Morlock and Norfolk Streets. Is Ms. Dryer here tonight? Come on down to the podium, but before you speak, I need a motion from my colleagues.
So moved.
Support.
Is that an approving motion?
Yes, it is.
Approving motion from Toy, support from Mr. McCullough. Ms. Dryer, good evening. Tell me your name and address, please.
Hi, good evening. My name is Elizabeth Dryer and I'm at 20370 Apporto.
Okay. You're requesting to have a block party. Can you give us a little bit of information about it?
Yes. So, we live on the quiet part of Apporto that is just between Norfolk and Morlock. We've been living there for the last five years and we've wanted to get a chance to know our neighbors. And so, now that COVID is more under control, we're going to have everyone have a get-together. So, the plan is, Apporto is basically a dead-end street, but we're going to host it on our front lawn along with our neighbors. We've already flyer'd everyone who is in our immediate area back in February, got input on what potential dates in May and June would work for them and specifically targeted May and June because I'm actually due in August. And so, trying to get to know everybody before the baby comes.
Awesome. Well, congratulations on the becoming addition.
Thank you.
And hopefully on the upcoming party here. Is there any comment from the council in regards to this? We have motions. Is there any comment from the audience in regards to the approving motion for Ms. Dryer's block party? I see none. Ms. Nash, can you take the vote on that, please?
Councilmember McCullough.
Aye.
Councilmember McIntyre.
Aye.
Vice President Toy.
Aye.
Councilmember Barr.
Aye.
Councilmember Donavich.
Aye.
Councilmember Morgan.
Aye.
President Jolly.
Aye. Your block, block party request is approved. Good luck.
Thank you.
Thank you for organizing that. Item number 12 is a signed petition from the Planning Commission regarding petition 202303SN01 submitted by Metro Detroit Signs on behalf of Pentagon Center condominium requesting approval to replace existing ground signs with larger non-conforming panel signs at 19500 Hagerty Road. That's between Seven Mile and Phillips Road in the southwest quarter of Section 9.
Could we have somebody close the door back there?
Does somebody mind closing the door back there if you can?
Mr. Smith. What? No.
Thank you. Okay, can I have a motion on this, please?
Move for approval.
Support.
It's a motion to approve from McCullough, support from Donavich.
Mr. President.
Mr. McCullough?
Um, no, thank you. I, I'm the one that put this in regular and, you know, after looking at everything, I think the signs, the signage request is fine. Going back, one of the reasons that I wanted an extra couple of weeks to think about it was going back to when we had some issues with the Beaumont property and the lights and just try to be good stewards of different developments and areas out there. I'm happy, I think there was a comment that, you know, since, there's been some, some good relationships. So, that was my main reason. Again, I think the sign's great compared to what it is and I'm, I'm happy to offer an approving.
Thank you, Mr. Barr.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Missed the last meeting but watched it. I was actually glad Mr. McCullough put this on regular. I do intend to support this, by the way, but my concern was just whether it was necessary because all the businesses that are being advertising the sign all have frontage on these main roads. However, I noticed that none of them, when I went back, I mean, I'm by there all the time, but when I backed back there to, to look, none of them have existing monument signs. So, I guess I have a question for, through the chair to Mr. Tarmina. With them doing this sign, does that, I'm assuming by the fact that they don't have monument signs, that there's something about the way this development was put together that they're not permitted to have those? Do you know whether that's correct?
I'm not sure that they're entirely precluded from having the monument signs, it just means if anyone does, they have to appear before the Planning Commission and the council.
Okay. And that, that actually answers my concern. I, I like the sign and having seen that, I'm fine with the sign with not, them not having it. I just didn't want to get in a situation where we do this and then suddenly have all these businesses at some point constantly wanting monument signs in addition, that would just seem too much. But, thanks for clarifying that, I'm happy to support.
Okay. Is there any audience comment on the item 12 signed petition? I see none. Petitioner, you're here, it looks like it's going to pass. Do you have anything additionally to say?
No, I don't.
Perfect. Ms. Nash, take the vote, please.
Councilmember McCullough.
Aye.
Councilmember McIntyre.
Aye.
Vice President Toy.
Aye.
Councilmember Barr.
Aye.
Councilmember Donavich.
Aye.
Councilmember Morgan.
Aye.
President Jolly.
Aye. The petition passes and you're all set. Thank you, sir.
Thank you very much.
Item 13 is a roll call vote for a proposed amendment to the zoning ordinance number 3160 as amended from the Department of Law for petition 2023010601 to consider multiple revisions to the zoning ordinance number 3160 to correct certain defects, add and delete provisions, and provide clarification to others. A first reading was provided on this matter by Councilman Scott Barr on April 10th of 2023. You wish to proceed with a second reading?
I would like to proceed with a second reading, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Mr. Barr. You've heard it, second reading on that matter. Does anybody have any comments at this time? Mr. Donavich?
Thank you, Mr. President. Remind me, are we going to vote on the, either the motions this evening then, or does that have to happen in the next meeting?
Nope, second reading, we will be voting tonight.
Okay.
On Mr. Barr's offering of the second motion.
Well, that, with, with that said, Mr. President, I would just like to let, you know, everyone know that I will be supporting this version of it and for the residents that, there's two resident, there's two motions out there, two different items we can vote on. They're similar in nature with the language.
Mr. Donavich, we don't have to get into that. Since he's offered the second reading, that's the only reading that will be offered tonight.
Can I give my explanation as to why I want to vote on this one, though?
Sure.
Okay, thank you.
We don't have to talk about two different ones and confuse the matter.
Yeah, and, and with that being said, this version of it would just be changing Livonia Vision 21 to Livonia Zoning Ordinance. And the reason why I will be supporting this item is because I don't know, from my understanding, looking at the ordinances, none of the other ordinances we have, they had, they don't have any catchy taglines. Like, the, the zoning ordinance is Livonia Vision 21 and I'd like to see it go to Livonia Zoning Ordinance with this item that I would be supporting. Just to make it clear, we all know it's Livonia Vision 21, but when a petitioner comes before us or, or someone else, I think it tends to get confusing when it's Livonia Vision 21, it's 2023, imagine 2030. So, I think it's just cleaner, Livonia Zoning Ordinance. I think it makes sense that way and I think that was the intent of Mr. Barr and I intend to go for that one. Thank you, Mr. President.
Mr. McCullough?
Thank you, Council President. You know, this, I, I don't really have an issue with the name change. I just look at, you know, the pros and cons. There's really not many to, to just making a simple name change. The only reason I'm not going to be supporting this measure tonight is the fact that there's probably a lot of clerical amount of time and work that's already went into changing these things. I'm sure that there is some monetary value and I just can't justify putting staff and spending, even if it's a minor amount of funding, on making this change for the name. Thank you.
Mr. Chair.
Is that Mr. Barr?
It was.
Go ahead.
I think it's just worth clarifying for the residents that are here tonight, this is much more than a name change, this zoning ordinance change is, is pretty extensive. We've spent a lot of time as a council looking into this. So, this is, name change is not what initiated this. 99% of this is a lot more substantive things than that. The name change was a simple suggestion that has had way more time devoted to it than I'd ever intended. So, thank you, Mr. Chair.
Anybody else from the council? Mr. McCullough?
Just to clarify, clarify. No, and we obviously had some motions. I, I'm not going to get in back and forth on it, but this basically was between one name change and keeping it Livonia Vision 21. That's why I'm not going to be supporting it. Thank you.
Ms. McIntyre?
Mr. McCullough's point is well-made and well-taken about using city resources, which are really taxpayer dollars for things that are frivolous, but given the technology of search and replace in documents, I, I am going to support this. I, I think that there, it makes sense to have consistency in how we name our ordinances and I, I think that I'm always cautious about spending resources, which again, every resource translates to taxpayer money, but I think it's justified in this case, the minimal amount of resource will be required. Thank you.
Ms. McIntyre, or, sorry, Ms. Toy. Got to keep close. Can I give you this for a second?
Oh, sure.
May I have the floor for just?
Please, go right ahead, Mr. President.
So, the two versions that are being talked about in regards to the zoning ordinance are 99% the same. The only difference between the two is one changes the, the title from Livonia Vision 21 to, Livonia Vision 21 Zoning Ordinance to just straight zoning ordinance. The only reason that I will be voting against it, although I agree with the 99% that is being shared, is we undertook a grand effort in this community to set up what was going to be the vision for our community for the 21st century. That is the Vision 21. This community was developed as the ideal 1960s suburban community and it served us well. And there was a lot of effort that went into that, but there's a lot of effort that went into making it what we need it to be for the next 80 or so years. I think as, as a lawyer and somebody who looks at statutes, it's a clear way to keep track of what was the zoning ordinance and what is now currently the zoning ordinance identified as Livonia Vision 21 Zoning Ordinance. And I think the effort of the community, since this is the grand result of that, at least to this point, I, I'm absolutely okay with the current name and I would like to see it stay that way. Thank you.
Is there any other comments before we leave this? Anybody from the audience wishing to address this?
Yeah.
Okay, real loud, yes.
(inaudible). 14006 Brookfield. And I would like to say that I was somewhat familiar with the process of Vision 21 and I think that that had a specific purpose and to remain Vision 21, we lose track of the history of how we got the way we are and why those particular ordinances are in place. So, everything would all of a sudden become just ordinance, just the, the core ordinances and we need to use the Vision 21 name in that, in that product.
Thank you. Thank you very much. Seeing and hearing no one else, would the clerk please take the role on the motion?
Councilmember McCullough.
No.
Councilmember McIntyre.
Aye.
President Jolly.
No.
Councilmember Barr.
Aye.
Councilmember Donavich.
Aye.
Councilmember Morgan.
Aye.
Vice President Toy.
No. Motion passes. I'm returning the gavel.
You can keep it if you want.
No, no.
All right. So, that concludes our formal agenda this evening. We're going to go back to audience communication. Is anybody in the audience wanting to address us on any item that's not on the agenda this I see no audience comments. We'll go back to the council.
I, I see some of our friends from Anastasia and Katie's here. Okay, I didn't know if you wanted to speak at audience communication, so I just want to make sure that you knew that there was another opportunity at the regular and that's now. But you're going to speak at eight, great. Sorry, Mr. Jolly, thank you.
So, we're going to close audience communication. We'll go to Vice President Toy, you have the floor.
Thank you. I just want to wish everyone a very happy Mother's Day and I also want to make a motion to adjourn.
Hold on.
I guess I don't want to make a motion to adjourn.
Ms. McIntyre?
I, I need to, it, it's procedural, but I would correct it in the minutes next week if I didn't do this now. I'm going to ask that the minutes be changed to reflect that I should have voted present on the approval of the minutes from the previous meeting. Of course you do. All right, thank you very much.
Mr. McCullough?
Not to make this meeting any longer, but after some of our agenda items that we had in terms of bus transportations and salaries, I'd like to put the subject matter of a comprehensive citywide salary survey into committee of a whole. I'm looking for support.
Support.
My thought process on this is I, I think every meeting we've had, there is some kind of a salary adjustment, whether it's the reserve officers, whether it's a library page, whether it's Parks and Rec, whether it's DPW, and I think every time our council has supported making sure that Livonia is competitive. I think that, you know, cities do this, they, they go through a comprehensive and I think that our Civil Service Commission could definitely benefit with a professional outside service maybe looking into local and, and even what's out there to ensure that we are competitive. I know the private businesses are also trying to be competitive and you're going to see a lot of things that are out there, but I think we are scary low in price on a lot of these positions and, you know, if we want to be the best, we've got to, you know, have the best benefits and, and potentially salary that goes along with it. That's my reasoning for putting this in the committee.
Okay. Any comment from the council? Any comment from the audience?
Mr. Chair.
Mr. Barr?
I don't want the meeting going any longer either since this has been raised. I, I can understand what Mr. McCullough is saying, but we have an administration that I assume is looking at this stuff. I assume that because they've brought several of these proposals to us over the past year and they've assured us that they've done that comprehensive, in fact, the very comprehensive survey that he's asked for, our HR department within the last year has told us has been done. So, I'll be voting no on this.
Okay. Audience comment? I see none. Ms. Nash, take the vote.
Councilmember McCullough.
Aye.
Councilmember McIntyre.
No.
Vice President Toy.
Aye.
Councilmember Barr.
No.
Councilmember Donavich.
Aye.
Councilmember Morgan.
Aye.
President Jolly.
Aye. The matter passes and I, if there's nothing else from the council, I think Ms. Toy.
Motion to adjourn.
Support.
Motion to adjourn. I think we can safely show seven. We're going to be back at 8:20 to start the eight o'clock meeting. I'm sorry, we'll take a quick break. Good night, Livonia.